I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Alderman Franklin.
Present.
Alderman Milner.
Present.
Alderman Chaney.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
Alderman Fauch.
Present.
Alderman Mills.
Present.
Alderman Dorhoff and Davidson are excused. Mayor Zaring.
Present. Thank you. We have a quorum. We have no ceremonial matters or no public participation, correct?
Correct.
All right. So we will move along to the approval of the Board of Aldermen Regular Meeting, May 19th, 2025. Those were in your packet.
Make a motion to approve.
I second.
And motion from Alderman Milner with a second from Alderman Franklin. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, those will stand. Next, we will bring to you the Board of Aldermen Work Session, May 19th, 2025.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Alderman Chaney with a second from Alderman Turner. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, those stand as... They are agenda items. First up on the agenda items is Council Bill 27.
A resolution of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville to authorize the Harrisonville Fire Department to write off a series of designated uncollectible debts.
All right, Chief Sullivan.
Our favorite time of the year. This is the bad debt that the fire department incurs and the city incurs due to what we do is we bill the insurance company. We collect that money or try to, then we bill the rest to the patient. This is bills that went to collections and can no longer collect it either through debt or they just decided not to pay, whatever the case may be. Along with that is some of the nursing homes, 31 accounts that we sent to the nursing homes and failed to, they just didn't pay, decided not to. That total this year, more than most of the time, is $971,861.67. That with the building process, we're collecting about 30% of what Harrisonville pays to run any of those.
So has the payment rate improved in recent years?
No, it gets worse.
Yeah, every year.
As the insurance companies put more and more restrictions on billing, it gets worse over the years. So at some point, we're going to have to decide what... Another reason why this 1% is so important.
And these are all, we're all considered emergency calls?
No. That's part of the problem is insurance companies, unless it is a true emergency, won't pay a lot of times. And so when we run the call, I mean, if we buy on the form, it's fraud. And so we say, okay, it was, we transported non-emergency to the hospital and then somebody somewhere in the office says, yeah, that wasn't an emergency, or yes, it was an emergency. We don't get to choose. We can, you know, we just write the report.
For a little clarification, this is for '16, '17, and '18, so there is three years. And the collection agency will only pursue those, I think, about seven years. So we're behind on those first two years or right on time. They basically will be uncollectible in their mind. And then the nursing home collections were an effort to try to recover some of those costs. But this has already been with the auditors to try to clean this up and get it off of the balance due.
Wow. Any other questions for Chief Sullivan?
Public service.
Yes, go ahead.
I think it's also good to point out is what we've talked about with the cost and how it is to keep the ambulance and the emergency services running about really that the residents are into picking up the bag on this.
Well, because even in the nursing homes, I mean, we know what the transfer rate is from the hospitals of out-of-town people. But nursing homes are probably pretty close to the same, aren't they? Out-of-town people?
Well, they are, but it depends on what you call a resident. So there's the rub.
Tax-paying citizens.
That's what I think. But if they have an address, I don't know. That's Alex's baby, not mine. We tried and it just didn't work out.
You're right. Every year this time, it comes, doesn't it?
See you next year.
And one other point, we currently have certain insurance companies that are playing this game to an extent where they are actually just refusing to acknowledge the claim until we run out of timely filing. And then they're just saying they never receive it, they lose it, the claim is just never processed, the checks never processed. We've, you know, Rusty had a conversation with Alex and, you know, I think Alex knows that this is a lost cause. I mean, we've sent them multiple certified mailings. We have proof that they received them. They just were choosing to ignore them. And so what we're currently doing is trying to force their hand by billing the recipient to get them to then turn around and bill to actually force the hand of their provider, which has not been successful to this point.
All right.
Another shift in the class.
All right, thank you, Chief. This is a resolution. There's no further questions. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Alderman Fauch with a second from Alderman Turner. Roll call, please.
Alderman Fauch.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Chaney.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson and Dorhoff are excused.
All right, thank you. Council Bill 27 is now Resolution 2025-10. Next up, we have the second reading for Council Bill 20.
An ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri, establishing Section 397.180 of the Harrisonville Municipal Code.
All right, Jeremy.
Good evening, Mayor Board. So I have a second reading for trying to clean up some of the business license language, but also provide for an avenue for temporary mobile vendors to get a no-cost license. Staff still recommends approval as presented, and I'll entertain any questions.
Any questions for Jeremy on that? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Alderman Milner to approve.
I second.
Second from Alderman Franklin. Roll call, please.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Fauch.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Chaney.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff and Davidson are excused.
All right, thank you. Council Bill 20 is now Ordinance 3725. Moving on to the second reading of Council Bill 21.
An ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville approving a rezoning from general industrial M2 District to single-family residential R1 District for 1.5 acres of land located at 403 Locust Street in the City of Harrisonville, Cass County, Missouri.
All right, Christina.
To keep this short and brief, is this his second reading? I have not received any phone calls or emails on this item, so staff still recommend approval.
All right. Any questions for Christina? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve.
All right.
Second.
Motion from Alderman Fauch with a second from Alderman Chaney. Roll call, please.
Alderman Fauch.
Aye.
Alderman Chaney.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Alderman Dorhoff and Davidson are excused.
Sorry. Yep. Council Bill 21 is now Ordinance 3726. Next up, we have the second reading of Council Bill 22.
An ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville approving a final plat for Cedar Crossings, lots 1 through 53 in Track Day, located south of Parkwood South and north of 267th Street in the City of Harrisonville, Cass County, Missouri.
Christina.
I could just stay for a minute. Same situation. I have not received any phone calls or emails on this item, and staff still stands by a recommendation for approval.
All right, thank you. Any further questions for Christina on this? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
A motion from Alderman Chaney to approve.
I second.
Second from Alderman Franklin. Roll call, please.
Alderman Chaney.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Fauch.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff and Davidson are excused.
All right, thank you. Council Bill 22 is now Ordinance 3727. Next up, we have the second reading for Council Bill 23.
An ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville approving a rezoning from single-family residential R1 District to non-retail business C0 District for approximately 20.52 acres of land located west of Jefferson Street, north of Locust Street, and Locust Terrace in the City of Harrisonville, Cass County, Missouri.
Christina.
And once again, we've not received any additional phone calls or emails on this application as well. Staff's been talking with the applicant for their next phases, but we are still recommending approval of this ordinance.
All right. Any questions for Christina on Council Bill 23? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Alderman Fauch with a second from Alderman Milner. Roll call, please.
Alderman Fauch.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Chaney.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff and Davidson are excused.
All right, thank you. Council Bill 23 is now Ordinance 3728. Next up, we have the second reading for Council Bill 24.
An ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville approving a final plat for Burris Ridge, 4th Plat, lots 1 through 76, located south of Burris Drive and west of Mechanic Street, Mo Highway 7, in the City of Harrisonville, Cass County, Missouri.
All right, thank you, Christina.
Again, there's not been any additional emails or phone calls on this item. Staff has continued to work with the applicant and they're agreeing with the conditions of approval, so we're recommending approval.
All right. Anything further from the board for Christina on this? Go ahead, Alderman Fauch.
The people that spoke at the last meeting, was any of that incorporated? I'm not sure there was anything substantial to incorporate, but...
I think there will be some minor, like you said, not necessarily substantial, but I think there will be some minor tweaks to the final plat to be signed before it comes back. But again, nothing really substantial.
All right. Seeing no other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Alderman Milner with a second from Alderman Turner to approve. Roll call, please.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Chaney.
Aye.
Alderman Fauch.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff and Davidson are excused.
All right, thank you. Council Bill 24 is now Ordinance 3729. Next up, we have the second reading of Council Bill 25.
An ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri, vacating a 15-foot-wide alley right of way running east and west within Lot 2, original town of Harrisonville, and establishing an effective date.
Christina, again.
And again, no additional emails or phone calls related to this item, so staff is still recommending approval of the ordinance as written.
Awesome, thank you. Does the board have any questions for Christina on this? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve.
Motion from Alderman Fauch to approve.
Second.
Second from Alderman Chaney. Roll call, please.
Alderman Fauch.
Aye.
Alderman Chaney.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff and Davidson are excused.
All right, thank you. Council Bill 25 is now Ordinance 3730. Next up, we have an administrative ordinance. This is Council Bill 28.
An ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville amending Section 397.100.A and establishing Section 397.190 temporary outdoor consumption for the City of Harrisonville, Cass County, Missouri.
Christina.
So a quick recap, we did discuss this about almost a year ago. It's July of last year. We spoke about creating language for entertainment or events district, whereas we discussed that an entertainment district was not allowed by state statute because it's only allowed in Kansas City and St. Louis essentially. The board was supportive and they, we basically had consensus to move forward and permit the temporary outdoor consumption of alcoholic beverages during events in the community with those being tied to the specific events. So the language that is for you tonight takes what we had back then and makes some tweaks to try to incorporate it within the special event section of the code. Specifically, 397.100.A adds including a public safety plan because a lot of the other pieces for a special event were already covered, but that was one that we felt was not covered within the regulation. And then the rest of the section is a new part of code specific to the events district and came from discussions from the board back then and also additional discussions with police on what needs to be in place and how to try to allow some options, a little bit of flexibility, but still having good parameters.
Awesome. Thank you for all your work on that. Question, Alderman Fauch.
Does the boundaries of the district, how far, what's the east boundary? Is that, does it include the entire parking lot area?
No, I think originally we were looking at having it a little bit bigger. Discussions with PD, they didn't want it to be that wide. They wanted to be able to keep folks that were having alcohol outside within a tighter boundary. And so that made sense that it's pretty much the square and one block out in all directions.
Any other questions for Christina? If not, this is an administrative ordinance.
Make a motion to suspend rules, move to a second reading.
Second.
Got a motion from Alderman Turner with a second from Alderman Milner to move, suspend the rule on Council Bill 28, move it to a second reading. Roll call, please.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Fauch.
Aye.
Alderman Chaney.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff and Davidson are excused.
All right, thank you. Second reading.
An ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville amending Section 397.100.A and establishing Section 397.190 temporary outdoor consumption for the City of Harrisonville, Cass County, Missouri.
All right, thank you. Roll call, please.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Fauch.
Aye.
Alderman Chaney.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff and Davidson are excused.
All right, thank you. Council Bill 28 is now Ordinance 3731. I'm going to do the first reading for Council Bill 29.
An ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville prohibiting the possession of dangerous weapons in Harrisonville ambulances and providing for exemptions.
Right, Chief Sullivan.
Every year across the United States, thousands of firefighters, police, or thousands of firefighters, EMTs, paramedics are injured and/or killed. Depending on what you call a first responder, so it could be anywhere from a doctor to a nurse or like this, the numbers go from 700,000 assaults a year. And if you just count ambulances, just the ambulances, it's 29,000 serious injuries and/or death each year. Or 29,000 injuries, 8,000 severe or resulting in death. And so Harrisonville currently doesn't have an ordinance forbidding somebody to carry illegally-owned weapon into the back of the ambulance. If they're under arrest or whatever the case may be, then the police can take it and stuff like this. But just like the building here, we want to forbid people to, for our protection, take knives, guns, or whatever. This will give law enforcement the ability to take that weapon, secure it until the patient's released. They will get, all hospitals have that disorderance already, right? If you go into a hospital, they will disarm you immediately. We're just asking for an ordinance for the ambulance.
Any questions for Chief Sullivan on that? All right, we're going to bring that back to second reading at the June 16th meeting. Thank you, Chief. All right, next up, we have the first reading for Council Bill 30.
An ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri, directing city staff to acquire necessary temporary and permanent easements to permit the engineering, construction, and completion of various sizes of stormwater sewer mains, 15 to 48-inch diameter, as part of the Bechardite Stormwater Drainage Improvement Project.
All right, thank you. Patty, were you going to speak on that?
Oh, that's right.
Yeah. So this ordinance is just kind of the first step as far as declaring what the public need is for this eminent domain. I don't have all of the facts or specifics, but as I understand, we've acquired many easements in this area. There are still a few that we have not acquired. And so the next step is we go through this ordinance process, and after the ordinance, we then file a petition in Cass County District Court to acquire those temporary and permanent easements that we need. So this is just first step. It'll come back in two weeks, and then you'll vote on it.
Yep, it'll be back at the June 16th meeting. Any questions for Alex?
What's the holdout on those that don't want to sign off?
I don't want to get too much into it in public. We could discuss later, but generally just negotiations back and forth.
All right, and then we'll come back to the June 16th meeting. All right, thank you all for all your work on that. We're moving on to the Alderman and Committee reports. Alderman Mills, we'll start with you so I don't forget you.
No, no report. Just very efficient, productive, and positive meeting tonight. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you, sir. Alderman Chaney.
I don't have much. The Oaks Lodge Fishing Derby is this Saturday, starts at 9:00. It's free for anybody who wants to come out. We cook hot dogs, provide food, fish and poles, bait, and I believe it's the MoDOT or the Missouri Conservation Free Fishing Weekend, so no permits or licenses are needed. So come out and see us.
Awesome. Thanks for all your work on that, too. I think you do that every year, right?
Every year. It's one of the biggest in the state.
Yep, it's a pretty big deal.
And the kids love it, so that's all that matters. Give away good prizes.
Yep, that's what I heard, too. Yeah. Awesome, thank you. Alderman Franklin?
I just wanted to report that tomorrow night, our customer appreciation day at the dog park is going to be canceled. We have rescheduled it for Thursday, June 26th at 5:30 PM. There is some nasty weather coming in, so we thought we would cancel it. Didn't want people getting out and out. So anyway, we look forward to seeing everybody on June 26th, Thursday evening at 5:30. And I wanted to bring this up before. When Ifil came before the board and wanted to expand their business out at the industrial park, we sat there and worked with them and we got that taken care of, and they took care of business. And if anybody goes up and down Plaza Drive, what they have done out there is just exceptional. I mean, it looks, it looks really good, the concrete work, the driveways, the landscaping, everything that they've done from start to finish, they have done a top-notch job. So I think we should all give ourselves a pat on the back for getting that taken care of and having them come here rather than going, I believe it was to Kentucky.
Kentucky, yeah, yeah. And it's actually Donaldson now. They're no longer Ifil, so you'll see the signage out there, yep.
Donaldson saw that they have got a much better package deal than some of the other air filtration system companies. And so they have actually gone from $6 million to $8 million in revenue. So that is going to be coming into us, so I think that's great. But anyway, they did a great job, so that's all I want to say.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Alderman Turner?
I have nothing.
Nothing? All right. Alderman Fauch?
No report.
Report. Alderman Milner?
I was reminded by one of our guests this evening that we need to make sure and remind everybody that Walt Bruins passed away this last week, and his funeral will be in the morning. And he and his wife were both huge members of the community here. And Walt put in a lot of years with the school district, and during his time, the high school was built, McEwen was built, and Nancy owned a shop up here on the square for years. It was a Hallmark, Hallmark and bookstore, yeah. But yeah, they were quite the characters and quite the citizens of this community, and we just want to wish their family our condolences.
Thank you for that. I think he was superintendent for a long time, wasn't he?
Yes, he was. He came, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, he came here in '67 as assistant and then stepped into superintendent.
Awesome, thank you for that.
Yeah.
All right. Next, we will have the report from the city administrator.
All right. South Service Area Sanitary Center project, the good thing is the South Packing Plant is gone, and it's been filled in, and Longwood Distribution Center has been hooked up, as well as the motel, the gas station, the Old Marina and Sapp Brothers. So those are up. Project's not completely all done yet, but we've at least got those up and going. Highway 2 project is continuing to move along. The James Street, Blueberry Storm Drainage Project, city staff's mailing updated project information to the property owners in that area because that's going to be starting on the week of July the 7th. The South Commercial Street extension, staff's working with the MoDOT to have the project right-of-way plans completed and about 90%, set of review drawings that have been submitted so far. So we're hoping by late summer to get that project bid. Then the 2025 asphalt program is moving out there, moving along. I listed out there some of the areas that we'll be working in this summer. 2025 gutter program, we're kind of waiting on the Freight Enhancement Program grant to see if we got that or not before we move forward with that one. And then Mechanic Street from I-49 to east of South Commercial Street, we received a federal funding agreement for the funds to not exceed 4.2 million. So that'd be a good project to get completed here in the near future. Streets Department had one of their larger citywide cleanups, had 402 people show up for that event. And then we, I-Decker's finishing up with some of the punch items out at the airport. We've also used, as the Police Department has some openings. You know anyone who want to be a police officer, Policee Darla? She'll be more than happy to sign people up. And then Parks has the shade structure being put in, as Alderman Franklin was talking about that. And if you haven't seen it, go by there and see it.
That's right.
It looks pretty good. And then we did participate in, the mayor and I and Jim Clark, in the ribbon cutting at Donaldson last week and toured the facility. Donaldson has 14,000 employees. We were competing with another city on this expansion, and we got the expansion. And they have 40 different facilities across the country. And anything filtered, you know, we talk about the OxyClean out at Church and Dwight. It's made in Harrisonville. Any kind of filter in anything you see is made by Donaldson. Even the filter for the chip in your cell phone is being made out of this company. So everything from filters and tractors to filters and buildings where they get all the dust out. It was pretty phenomenal to go in there and see all that they do and the impressive operation that they have, so.
Do they give tourists? Do they give group tours, do you?
Yeah, they said anytime anyone wants to go by it, they're for tour. So if you all want to, I can set it up, so just let me know.
It'd be nice to go through there once they get everything finished.
Put a pink hard hat on you. Now you got to wear goggles in the vest.
Safety goggles and a yellow vest. No hard hats. And with that, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
All right, thank you, sir. Questions from the media? No, thanks for being here, sir.
Mike, can I make a clarification?
Yes.
I think I said '76, I meant '67. Oh, I said '67.
No, you said '67, yep.
I thought I said it backwards, sorry.
I was just going to ask, with that project on South Street getting ready to start, the transportation plan, has that been approved for the detours and all that stuff?
For, you talking about Highway 2?
No, MoDOT has not. We haven't got that far with them yet. Oh, good. And when is that supposed to start?
Two years ago, two years ago.
Last year.
Last year.
We'd like to bid at late summer or fall.
Oh, okay.
See if we get through MoDOT.
Okay, I thought it was coming up soon.
Yeah.
Oh, it was the last fall.
It's still MoDOT, so.
That's all, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Can I make a motion to adjourn?
My second.
Motion from Alderman.
We're doing that now?
The machine is announcing.
What we do, where we go with me to?
Oh, okay. Oh, okay, go ahead, Alderman.
What else do I need to add?
It'll be after work session.
Okay. I make a motion to adjourn a closed session pursuant to RSMO six-ten dot oh-two-one-two, leasing, purchase, or sale of real estate, and we'll, after the work session. We're gonna do it now?
We're adjourning to executive session.
All right, so we got that adjournment, that motion, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, it's good to move.
Yep, got a motion.
Second.
Got a second from Alderman Turner. Roll call, please.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Chaney.
Aye.
Alderman Fauch.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff and Davidson are excused.
All right, thank you. We are in the special session now. I think, or executive session, I'm sorry. Yep, let's go over to the chamber rooms over here.